The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 20, 2015 Waukegan City Council Meeting. A roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Velco.
President.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye, President.
Please stand for the invocation and the pledge. Bishop Colburn, please.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for all your blessings. The mayor is here all of the year. All of us are here, Lord. May I ask that you bless us and do everything that we can do to make our city better. Bless every department here. Bless the police department, the fire department, every department here. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, I'd like to make a special presentation for Coleman Cable/South Wire. During one of our meetings, it was brought to our attention that this company did something very special. Alderman Seager, if you would, please explain what happened?
Yes, sir. I received a call from Mr. Blackwood wanting to set up an appointment to discuss what they could do to improve conditions in the ward on 11th Street. And I did so. And we did it with a handshake and a promise. There was a house at 1402 10th Street. They had purchased that property. They, in turn, took the house down. It was ready to collapse. It was a real bad eyesore. And I want to thank them. They reached out to me, stepped forward, removed the house, cleaned up the lot, cut all the grass, trimmed the bushes, trimmed the trees, and I thank you. I'd like to thank Scott Blackwood, Mike Hughes, and Mark Rogers for all their hard work. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Gentlemen, would you please come forward? We have a special recognition for you. Alderman, would you join me, please?
Face the camera, guys. Face the camera.
Over there, guys. Thanks, guys. Okay. God, thank you so much. Mark? Thank you so much. And you've got to be Mike. Ladies and gentlemen, this is what I say time and time again during council meetings. It's people like this that makes Waukegan what it is today. These people volunteer their time and effort and non-financial weartholz to help this community. And for that, I give you... Thank you very much. (Applause) Those of you who didn't participate in Scoop the Loop, you scoop, actually, not Scoop the Loop, I'm sorry. Those of you who didn't participate in Scoop missed a wonderful, a wonderful weekend. Saturday, 17,000 people downtown Waukegan. Not one incident, not one fight, not one arrest. The vendors, the business owners downtown were elated. They made a lot of money. Saturday, it rained the first couple hours, but at 7:00, we had 11,000 people back downtown in the rain. So it was very successful. And I, and I, I'll tell you this, a lot of what happened downtown Waukegan is the responsibility of that scoop was conducted by George Torres. George, stand up, please, in the back. David Marion, David Motley, and my good friend who worked with the original scoopers, Jerry Cook. Jerry, stand up.[523.01][523.01](Applause) So, the promise that I made prior to my election was I'd bring Waukegan back together. If you came downtown, you would have sworn you were in the United Nations. Everybody, from every race, creed, or color, was downtown. And everybody commingled. It was a great time. I got to see some vehicles, like, the cars had hopped. They were great. Everyone, everyone had a good time. And every year, we're going to look forward to it again. And again, it was paid for by donations, not by the City of Waukegan. We went out there and solicited people to sponsor it, and they did. And I thought it was a very good venture. So, gentlemen, we're going to recognize some of the people who helped, the volunteers that helped, because again, without the volunteers, Scoop would never occur, because we cannot afford to pay the costs of paying our employees to work down there. So, that being said, audience time. Kim Ball, please.
My name is Kim Ball, and I reside at 2904 Concord Lane in Wadsworth, which is located in Waukegan's 8th Ward. Tonight, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen, a huge fan, and a frequent visitor of our Waukegan municipal beach. How fortunate we are as residents to have this wonderful natural resource available to us. My specific concern is that of motorized water vehicles, such as wave runners and boats, at the beach. I have provided in the packets that are coming around to you photographs for your reference. In these photographs, I have done my best to show through pictures the violations that occurred yesterday. Further, it's important to notice from these pictures that the signage at the beach is not clearly understood, and definitely not providing any enforcement to this policy is a concern to all of us. The main sign in the area is vandalized and not posted correctly. So yesterday, I must have spent a solid five and a half hours at the beach. I hope you're loving my tan as much as I am. But the motorized vehicle activity was significant, and I believe put the city of Waukegan and human life at risk. The risk came from these vehicles, number one, being in restricted areas, driving at high rates of speed, and more specifically, driving at high rates of speed but within a 200-foot radius of the beachfront itself and in those restricted areas. Along with others, I tried to explain the rules by directly speaking to those violators and referencing the signs, all to no avail. Phone calls were made to the Lake County Sheriff's Office, as well as the Waukegan Police Department, for assistance. Several hours after the phone calls were made, I believe a City of Waukegan employee witnessed this situation, but I believe he's also unable to enforce or ticket the violators. And later in the day, the sheriff's boat did pass by and see all of the violators as well, but to my knowledge, no ticketing was completed for those violators. The idea to have motorized water vehicles restricted to a specific area of our beach is correct, but without enforcement, it is failing. Yesterday, I saw too many of those close-call-type situations, and it definitely wasn't the first time that that has happened in my stays at the beach. It is in my opinion that, but I believe that many of these motorized vehicles are being brought to the beach by non-residents, of which I'm not opposed to at all. My understanding is non-residents must pay $20 on the weekends to have access to our beach. Let's assume that on an average weekend, the city is collecting $20 from 100 cars, therefore receiving $2,000 in revenue, or maybe on a day like yesterday...
Ms. Ball, that's three minutes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I'm going to make it really, really quick.
Oh, hurry up.
I promise. Okay, thank you. So let's just pretend it was $4,000. But anyways, my questions are, how does this revenue fall into our city's budget, and how are these revenue dollars used to enhance the quality of Waukegan's beach? With that saying, I'm just voicing my concern, and I'm also offering my services as a volunteer and a citizen of this community to work with any of the city council leaders or leaders of our city to assist in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ball, I will tell you, we're aware of that.
Yep.
Lisa May, myself, David Motley, IDNR, who else is involved in that? We're aware of it. We've talked about this at length. We're trying to get buoys out there to restrict movement into the Bay Area, so we are working on that. As far as jurisdiction, it's Lake County. We don't have jurisdiction on the water, and that causes a problem. So, but, believe me, we're aware of this issue, and we're going to try to correct it to the best of our ability.
And another time, I'd appreciate understanding how those revenue dollars that are coming into our city's budget are being used.
The money pays for the people who work the entries to the, entry to the beach. It pays their salary. It pays for cleanup. It pays for things of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street in Waukegan, and I'm here representing Waukegan Main Street. Along with our usual weekly activities in downtown Waukegan, we have two wonderful things that are coming up or happening right now. The first is Waukegan Theater Festival at Three Brothers Theater. This is their annual summer fest, their second year in a row. It's seven plays in four weekends, two different venues, Sidecar Studios, as well as their own Three Brothers Theater. It began this last weekend and goes through August 7th and 8th. These are original plays, never before seen. You get to meet the playwrights and the directors and the actors one-on-one. It's a really interesting, different way to see live theater. I encourage you all to go. It's very inexpensive. Coming up this Thursday, the 23rd, is the Second Annual Vista Health Systems Waukegan Criterium Bike Race and Block Party. That's a mouthful. The races begin on Thursday morning at 10:00 a.m., and they go all day. They start with the amateurs and go all the way through to pros. These are pro bicycle racers. This is a Criterium Bike Race, which means it's one stage. They earn points towards a final contest in the end for, I don't know their official terminology, sorry. I'd like to make a special mention that there's a kids' race for ages four to nine. They can register at the Genesee from noon until 4:00. And they're, they line up for the race at 4:30, and they actually get to ride the race course, just like the pros, at 4:45. All they need is a bike and a helmet. At 5:15, right before the pro races begin, I'd like to invite the city council members, as well as city staff, to the ribbon cutting that will take place at the start-finish line at Madison and Genesee. This will be followed by the women's pro race at 5:30 and the men's pro race at 6:30. We are also hosting a block party in the CLC Courtyard. During the afternoon, there will be kids' games, and in the evening, there will be a more adult party with Talking Trash, a local band, playing from 6:00 to 10:00. All are invited. It's a free event. Forecast is good for that day, so I hope you're all able to come out. And we are still looking for a few volunteers to be course marshals. It's really important that we keep the bike race course clear of spectators. So if anybody has any free time, an hour, two hours, three hours that day, please volunteer to be a course marshal. It's a kind of a fun event to participate in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Meara. Mary Reese. Which one's Mary? Mary, this is your time. Do you need all those people with you, ma'am?
She said, and she, you go ahead, let him know.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I need support on that. I don't like the conversation.
Okay.
My complaint is with the block grant that I was granted and the work that was performed. As a senior citizen and as a homeowner, I didn't have any rights, and the work that was done was sloppy. And when they put the refrigerator and the stove into my living room on the carpet, sure, the carpet was filthy, because I had wanted that taken up. And Mr. Isell, I told him, when they put the refrigerator back, I could not open the refrigerator door. So he told me just to trim part of the cabinet, the facing of the thing off, so that the refrigerator could fit. Then when they tried to put the stove back, the glass broke on the stove, but they did replace that. And then, on my floors, I wanted all that old flooring taken up in my utility room to have it leveled down with my kitchen, but instead of doing that, they placed some wood on top of, the old wood that was down, which I'm sure probably had mold under it, because a lot of times, I would forget, and my washer would overfloor. And then when I was explaining to him that they had, that he, the floor was raised up, and later on in life, since I'm a handicapped senior citizen, if I needed to use a wheelchair, I couldn't roll from my bedroom into my kitchen, and he just said, "Oh, just forget about it. Go ahead and put the towel back down on the floor. You're causing a nightmare." And I just didn't like the way he told me about the carpet. He said, "We're not taking that carpet up." I said, "Yeah, but they've been tracking in here. The workers have been tracking here on top of my carpet, and the carpet is much worse." So he said, "I'm not having it taken up." And they didn't. They left it like that. And I just feel, as a senior citizen, I'm going to pay for work that was done that wasn't done. Nothing on that block grant list was done. They just went over everything. They put the siding on top of two other layers of siding that was on the house that probably got mold up under it. And I asked them, wasn't they going to take it off? And they told me, "No, quit causing a nightmare. Quit messing with the workers." So I feel, as a homeowner, I don't have any rights. Why pay for something? To me, that's fraud. I'm paying for work that wasn't even done, so I...
This was done through CDBG?
Yes.
This was done through...
Yes. And the contract was...
Isell Robbins?
And it was Phoenix Construction Company, and they do terrible work. The work, you should see it. You should come out and take a look at it.
Ms. Reese, what's your home address?
1032 North Lewis Avenue, Waukegan.
1032 what?
North Lewis Avenue.
North Lewis. Mr. Morris, the board.
Okay. North Lewis. Ma'am, I can't speak on behalf of the city on this. CDBG is a branch of the city, but if you'll give me time to talk to Mr. Robbins about this, I will.
And I was crying, because it just made me feel bad. I couldn't say nothing. They wouldn't let me say nothing to try and work with me to correct nothing.
Let me talk to Mr. Robbins, ma'am, and then I will get back to you personally. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Who was the contractor again? You're on, I didn't hear.
Phoenix Construction.
What's the name?
They do terrible work. I recommend them to nobody.
Okay. Okay, ma'am. Well, I'll get back to you right away. Okay? Mr. Blanks?
I'm just here, we're here, because at this point, there's a history and a pattern, which I'm well aware of, with the CDB Block Grant Department and these sub-quality contractors. This has been persisted for some time. We have filed a complaint with the U.S. Department of Housing on behalf of Ms. Reese, and we're here to let any senior citizens or elders know that if you have had any problems with the Community Development Block Grant Department, you feel you have been treated unfairly or unjust in these sub-line contracts or with these block grant department, you can come to Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, file your complaint. Our number is 773-510-1713. Please do not get the name confused. We represent any and all people who feel they have been treated unjustly and unfairly. But most definitely, we store with those who feel they have been treated the worst first, from Market Street to McAllister. So we would not tolerate our senior citizens being disrespected or talked to, disrespected or not treated right. This would not go unchallenged, and this would not go unchecked. I can't help but think of Mr. Arthur Bromfield. As we approached August the 10th, this man's home was torn down by the city. He tore this man's house down in a moment of illness. He was sick. He committed no crime to anyone, but his house was torn down by this very city, and that elderly man was mistreated. But we would not stand idly by, so we're telling any elderly and any senior citizens, if you want to file your complaint with us, that number is 773-510-1713, or you can come to 409 Oak Street in Waukegan and file your complaint.
And may I say one other thing? I was going to write to the president, but instead, I chose to talk to Mr. Blanks, because I could talk to him face-to-face with the President of the United States. I wouldn't have been able to do that.
Well, I take that as a compliment. Thank you. But, but at the same time, with all jokes aside, we're letting all citizens know that we are accessible, and we will take your complaints, we will file complaints on your part. We would not tolerate our senior citizens being taken advantage of in no form or no fashion. If, let me see, senior citizens, let me make sure I covered everything, sub-line contractors? No, we can't have sub-line contractors here doing this, doing this type of work. I'm familiar, because I'm a recipient of the 50/50 program, and I know the type of work that is not done on these homes and how our citizens are being taken advantage of, but it's a new day on that, and we are filing complaints on their behalf. Thank you for your time, your attention. Thank you for this.
Ms. Reese, my door is always open. Please feel free to stop in, but I'll get, I'll make an appointment for you to come in and talk to me and CDBG Director, Mr. Robbins, okay? James Dicker, please.
How you doing? My name is James Dicker. I live at 203 Keith Avenue. Ms. Lisa May is my alderperson, and I would like to ask the mayor and all the aldermen, all the women, if they would consider a change to the ordinance that would allow residents who would like to to keep chickens in the backyard. I am an advocate of sustainability.
Sir, I can tell you right now, no.
I like chickens.
No.
Why? Why not?
I will not allow chickens or wild, wild animals in the community.
Farm chickens.
Next, it will be farm animals. Next, we'll want, we want pigs, horses, cows. It's not going to happen, sir.
The mayor in the community of Libertyville? High-class Libertyville?
They allow it. Lake Forest allows it.
They say no chickens. My backyard would be very conducive to three chickens. I don't want no roosters crowing all night long. I'm talking about three chickens.
Could I, could I at least finish?
Please, please, sir, go ahead.
I am not talking about roosters. I'm just talking about allowing a citizen, if he wants to have three or four chickens in a pen in their backyard, to have them.
Oh, bless you.
The City of Chicago allows it, Libertyville allows it, Gurnee allows it. Why can't Waukegan have it?
We're in that, we're behind the tanks.
Yeah. I promise I give you eggs if you let us do it.
Sir, you know what? I will do this. You, you convince Lisa May, Alderman May, of this. If you convince her of this, maybe I'll consider it.
Be careful, mayor. My sister's an urban farmer. She has five chickens.
Thank you.
Out in Phoenix. She's in, she's two miles from City Hall, not even two miles from City Hall.
Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That was pretty much it. Like I said, there are neighboring communities that allow it, Gurnee allows it, they allow you to keep four. Fox Lake allows it, Graves Lake, the City of Chicago allows it. Say what? Yeah. So, I mean, how come we can't do it? There's no reason not to. You can put restrictions, keep three or four, keep them in your backyard, keep them in a pen. I'm not advocating, like, you know, large chicken production, like, let somebody have 100 chickens, just a few. They keep the yard free of bugs, they fertilize the grass, fertilize your garden.
Good manure.
Good manure.
Your Honor, I have a...
Alderman Cunningham, just a general question. Is there a specific reason why, why you would like for us to allow farm animals? I'm not going to say specifically chickens, but...
Chickens are domesticated, by the way.
I understand that.
Right.
But I think if we did allow for the chickens, then the door will be open for other farm animals, and I think that's what our, if I'm not mistaken, that's what our ordinance says. It doesn't specifically say chicken. It talks about farm animals.
I understand your point, but if a city like Chicago can do it and deal with it, how come we can't? Libertyville does it. It's no problem. Gurnee does it.
Well, I know a lot of those are rural areas they have. Unfortunately for us, I mean, that this does not really work in our concept, but my question has been answered, asked and answered, and I'm with the mayor. Lisa May, it's on you.
Yeah. Sir, if you'll stay, I'll talk to you after this, but, you know, please understand, the alderman is absolutely correct. We open the door for chickens, then we'll get goats, then we'll get, I'm telling you, you know, I came from a farm. I know what it's like, all right?
They cut the grass well.
Yeah. Okay, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sheep, goats? What about goats?
Item number five, minutes. Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 6, 2015. Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item six, resolutions, appointments, presentations, appointments. Item A, resolution for Hank, Henry Hank Bogdala, Sr. Motion by, go ahead and read it, read it, Madam Clerk.
Whereas Hank Bogdala, Sr. is a lifelong resident of Waukegan, and whereas Hank, Henry Hank Bogdala, Sr. is married to Beverly and a proud father of five children, Henry Jr., Kevin, Cynthia, Julia, Jeffrey, and nine grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. And whereas Henry Hank Bogdala, Sr. served in the U.S. Air Force, and whereas Henry Hank Bogdala, Sr. retired as a salesperson from National Wide Technologies, Inc., was a former police officer for the Illinois Secretary of State Police Department and a former investigator for the Illinois Department of Revenue. And whereas... Main Street, Toys for Tots, and many other organizations. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Motley and the members of the city of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby recognize the commitment and dedication of Henry Hank Bogdala Sr. to this community. Be it further resolved that insuritable involves copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and the city clerk be presented to Henry Hank Bogdala Sr. dated this July 20th, 2015.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Tempest. To accept the resolutions presented. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Belle, will you please come forward?
He's been dedicated, he's dedicated to this community. He's worked tirelessly to help this community prosper and grow. We also, Pat Jones was kind enough to commit to this, so we named the street after him. Thank you.
Wednesday at what time?
Wednesday at 2:00.
Wednesday at 2:00.
What's the, what's-
The address?
Harding and Alexander. Yeah.
What is it?
2:00 Wednesday on-
Harding and Alexander Court.
Harding and Alexander Court.
And then Montclair.
Oh, I'm coming.
Harding and Alexander.
Okay, okay, everybody got that? 2:00 Wednesday. 2:00 Wednesday.
Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is volunteer recognition for the members and volunteers of SCOOP. David, would you please come forward? David, would you please read the names of the volunteers? We have certificates for each one-
Certainly, we have certificates for everyone who signed in as a volunteer. So I'd like to get Jerry Cook, Bob Pataki, Ron Selesnik, let me see, who else? Dick Breen, and also Jose Sway to come up here. George, Dave Marion, and Mayor, could you come down here and shake the hands, please?
Shaking their hands.
So you guys stand over on that side? So the long and short of it is, short, I'm trying to be as brief as possible, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to make any jokes about Bob, no. Mayor, why don't you go on over there? Long and short of it is, we had 32 volunteers sign in to be part of this event, and we're just doing the quick math that the national rate for volunteerism is $23 an hour at $5 an hour, so we came up at a cash equivalent of $3,680 for all 32 volunteers. And that does not even take into account the number of volunteers that were acquired by our colleagues at the Waukegan Main Street, also at the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, and also the CERT volunteers that helped supplement the Waukegan Police Force at the SCOOP event itself. So to that end, we are going to call the names, and when you hear your name, please come on up and get your certificate. I promised all the volunteers they were gonna get a taco, they were gonna get a t-shirt, and at some point, a certificate of recognition. So here we go. The city of Waukegan does hereby present Chris Platt, the Certificate of Recognition for Your Dedication in Volunteer Service for SCOOP, presented at this city council meeting Waukegan, July 20th, 2015, signed by the mayor and city clerk. So we're gonna pass those down. Bill Cashman. Jim Timms. Sonny Garza. We have to fix this because it actually says Sony Garza. And since Sony was not a sponsor, we can't let that slide.
Sony is shared?
Yeah. Peg Grutzenmacher. John Agnew.
Who's our sponsor?
Aaron Breen. Next, we have Jim Scott. Ray Salata. Marty Brunallo. Pat DiMigliio. Linda Salata. Don Constantino. Chris Cashman. Justice Morgan, that's one of Jose's crews, Jose's crews. Carlos Catalan. Christian Hernandez. Christian Zavala. Alexis Rodriguez. Bruce Kennedy. He's also an employee of the city of Waukegan. Sean Stikes. We knew Sean was a lock to come tonight, that's for sure. Jerry Geltner. Amy Geltner. Rich Thompson. And Larry Petron. Ron Ballick. We may have missed some names. Ron Ballick. Is he here? Yes. He was the photographer extraordinaire. I'll get yours. And certainly, last but not least, we have our own original scooper, Dick Breen. Bob Pataki. Ron Selesnik. And last but not least, Jerry Cook. But don't go anywhere yet. We also had a really quick opportunity to present one more special certificate to a person who went probably above and beyond the call for this event, and that is a person of which I'll read his name in a moment. But this city of Waukegan certificate does hereby get presented to Ron Selesnik for his, this certificate of special recognition and outstanding achievement for commitment to SCOOP 2015. Ron, single-handedly, above and beyond his regular job, solicited sponsorships more than $6,000 to pay for the event. He also is a business owner in Waukegan, and he stepped up as a sponsor himself. So we thought that he would deserve also a special recognition and a special plaque for his extra effort, Ron.
Thank you.
That boy running.
So that being said, it's photo time. Jose, would you get a photograph of everybody? And you're gonna have to get together like a team, because you are-
Move sideways, everybody.
Ron, Mr. Photographer, can you stage that for us, please?
Put the short guys in front. Short guys in front.
Thank you, everybody. See you next year.
Basically, you came through again.
Hey, you were just driving to me. Who's that? I'm up there. 81, Mayor, I know I don't look it. I know I don't look it. I still go with you.
Finance Committee, Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Committee met this evening. First item on the agenda is to authorize the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Spyglass Group LLC to analyze telecommunications service accounts for cost reduction and savings. And what this is, this company analyzing, analyzes, excuse me, our primary telecommunications service accounts, which is our local voice, long-distance voice, data, internet, and wireless. And what they do is they seek cost recovery and service elimination, and it's, what they find out, there's no cost to the city for this, for this service, and if they come up with cost savings, they receive 50% of the cost savings. Finance Committee voted to, to recommend, excuse me, Finance Committee recommended an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
He stepped out.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, to adopt a resolution to formally adopt a policy governing the accounting for capital assets. For you citizens who don't know, any buildings, building components, building improvements, computer hardware, machinery and vehicles in the city's capital asset listing that is $50,000 or over, and the useful life, excuse me, the useful life equals to exceed five years, has to have done by accounting asset policy. We have been doing this for several years. We just never adopted a policy to do it. So this is just a formality here this evening, and the Finance Committee recommends an ISO move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The last thing, Your Honor, I'm happy to say that there was 35 new business licenses that were obtained in this, obtained last month for the city of Waukegan, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee, Alderman May, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee met this evening, and we have one item. The Economic Development Committee recommends to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 14, "Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations," to allow for mobile food trucks and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Valco. Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met this evening. Four items on the agenda. Item A, Public Works Committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for three new salt spreaders, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moizio. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Item B, Public Works Committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Caponella and Sons of Wasworth, Illinois, for the Brookside and Butrick Storm Sewer Repair Contract for an amount not to exceed, there's a correction in that amount, $498,757.80. Funds for this contract are available from line item 555-916027065, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. Item C, Public Works Committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with RJ Underground of Kenosha, Wisconsin, for the water main replacement for the 2,400 block of Grand Avenue for an amount not to exceed $181,654. Funds for this project are available in line item 555-916027043, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. Item D, Public Works Committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with SWALCO for an amount not to exceed $36,490 for the 2015 calendar year. Funds for this membership are available in line item 218-1218-24420, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
I think, under old business, item A, adopt as presented in ordinance to amend Section 2166 entitled "One-Way Streets and Alleyys" by adding the filing language to paragraph B. Willow Road from 7th Street to Belvedere Road, northbound. This was held over by Alderman Seager. Alderman, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, sir. Can we go for a vote on Willow Road?
Not yet. Do you want to speak about it before we vote on it? Did you want to discuss it?
With Willow Road, there's a lot of traffic coming through our subdivision. A lot from off 120. And a lot of dumping. So I'd like to get it slowed down with that making Willow North one-way, from 7th Avenue to 120.
Motion by Alderman Seager, seconded by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor.
The motion is to adopt as presented in ordinance to amend Section 2166 entitled "One-Way Streets and Alleyys" by adding the filing language to paragraph B. Willow Road from 7th Street to Belvedere Road, northbound, and this was held over by Alderman Seager.
Can we make comments?
We're gonna make Pershing Road a one-way street because they dump down there all the time. I think it's a major inconvenience to the people in that subdivision. I don't know what, I, I don't know what brought this up, if it was the, if the dumping thing, I just don't think that that's a solution. So, I wasn't here for the first meeting on it, but I definitely don't plan to support this ordinance.
Alderman, this was brought about, Alderman Seager went, and he went and polled the neighbors along the thoroughfares. It's used as, it's actually used as a cut-through, and the traffic through that subdivision is horrendous. By making the, by cutting off the cut-through, it'll stop the traffic along there as well. It'll address some of the dumping issues. But I think the main thrust from people who I talked to and who called my office, they told me, thank goodness, you're finally doing this, because I'm, during the rush hours, it's like a racetrack over there. So I think, am I, am I correct in that, Alderman, or not?
Yes, Mayor, you are.
Okay. I think the real thrust here is not the dumping. I think the real thrust here is the cut-through from Belvedere Road to 10th Street. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Tempest?
Yes, I'm very familiar with the... I'm very familiar with the area. I hate to take any street off that's been the way it's been for so long. If there's a problem with people dumping, that's, we don't have that anywhere. That ought to be solved in another way. Yes, it is a cut-through, saves gas, saves wear and tear in your car, and yes, there's a lot of traffic there, but in a lot of areas, there is gonna be a lot of traffic. Why do we take a road, make it one-way that's been two-way all those years, all those years? And I, I'm entirely against changing, just for change's sake. I don't see what you're gonna really accomplish, but make people spend a little more gas to go all the way around, maybe that would automatically get into their subdivision a little easier.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? If not, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
I'll vote with the Alderman. Aye.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
I do have concerns about this, but I will vote with the Alderman of the ward.
A pass of 6-3. A next item, new business. Item A, approval of payroll dated July 10, 2015, the amount of regular payroll, $1,414,335.12, and final payout in the amount of $8,519.95. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated July 20, 2015, in the amount of $1,845,162.76. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item C, approved block parties. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Taylor. Alls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, authorize a proper city official to execute the record, seventh petition to divide a portion of Special Assessment Number 042 of the City of Waukegan for the property identified by PIN numbers 0736104002 LOT 1 and 0725311011 LOT 2 at Fountain Square. A motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Can you explain it?
Yeah, I need to explain it a little better, if you could, Mayor. When they, when they subdivided the property, they had to specify these two lots. Is Russ here? Steve, go ahead. We did this when we divided the lots out there.
This is, this is just a, it's basically a pro forma document we're doing. Every time we split the special assessment up at Fountain Square...
Okay.
We have to recalculate the assessed value for each property as far as the contribution to the assessment, and then I record that at the courthouse as the new assessed value of each property. It's simply that, for that reason, every time they split, and this is being done because of the, what the council approved for Panda Express.
Okay, roll call, please. Everybody else get their question?
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
No ordinances or resolutions, all the time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk quickly about the, we approved the new mobile food ordinance, mobile food vendor ordinance this evening. So you can look for, hopefully soon, it'll be kicking off. It's gonna be on the Art Walk Saturdays, when there's a ticketed event at the Genesee Theater. What's the other one? Oh, and Food Truck Fridays. So, look for the food trucks on County Street between, no, on Madison Street between County and Genesee.
Clayton Street.
Clayton Street between...
County and Genesee.
Between County and Genesee, coming soon, hopefully. It'll be very interesting to see that new feature downtown. I just want to give a shout-out to the Licensing and Collections Department. They've done a really great job reaching out to the community. They've got, have a presence on Facebook now. They really are bringing the department into better technology. You can download or upload to your computer applications for daycare licensing, food and beverage tax payments, solicitors' permits. There's now e-bills available for your water bill, so you can sign up and have the whole automatic e-bill with your water now. You don't have to physically go out and pay your water bill. You can sign up and it'll come to you. So, there's some really great improvements being made, and I just wanted to shout-out to George Torres for, you know, leading that department and really doing a great job of reaching out to the community and bringing better, higher-level service. And then my last thing, Mayor, is chickens.
Here we go.
When you assign this to me, I don't think that you and I...
Help me out, Sam.
I don't think that you and I have discussed chickens, but it'll give us something new to talk about rather than the beach.
[inaudible]
So, I'm sorry, Mayor, we're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some, I'm gonna educate you a little bit on urban chickens, but we won't do it tonight. I, it's not what you think. I do like urban chickens. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Valco?
Thank you. I'm surprised you didn't bring this up, but I was. You want to bring it up, since you're at the beach? Go ahead.
It's okay.
We heard from Ms. Kim Ball tonight on the, the wave runner action and the motorboat at municipal beach, and I don't know if Kim is still here. Oh, there she is, she's one outside. This is really a little disturbing to me, and for those of you in the audience that don't know, I believe it's anything four feet or six feet into the water, the Waukegan Police Department has no authority whatsoever. So it's all the Lake County Sheriff's Department. And maybe we can get the mayor or the chief of police or one of the deputy chiefs, we can make a call to Lake County Sheriff's Office, and maybe we can get some more patrolling on there, because some of these pictures are just really basically ludicrous. It's terrible. And I see a couple of little kids here, and that would be my main concern, that one of these wave runners coming at 30 or 40 miles an hour is gonna strike one of these kids. So hopefully, we can get this resolved, good presentation. Ms. Ball, it was very enlightening and a little disturbing. Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Taylor.
First, I want to thank all the volunteers who helped out at SCOOP. If you weren't down there, you missed a great activity. It was busy on Friday night and on Saturday night. You know, it's a great family activity and brings the community together. I think it's wonderful. Second, I'd like to explain my vote on, on Willow Avenue. I had people call me on both sides of the issue. Some wanted it closed off, actually more wanted it closed off than didn't, by a slight margin. So, I defer to the second ward Alderman on that, and that's why I voted the way that I did. Third, I'd like to wish Mayor Motley a happy 65th birthday tomorrow.
Isn't that great? Love it.
Alderman Cunningham?
I know they have a card and stuff. Can we get invited to that celebration, Mayor? No, I, I'm past. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
Alderman Seager?
Happy birthday, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo?
I just reiterate, Alderman Valco, I was down at the beach. It's a, and it was packed, both sides, South Beach, North Beach, it was packed, jammed. I think the problem is, it's a communication problem. The signage, although some people may think it's okay, as a teacher, it's not. It's very vague on what you're supposed to do, 'cause when Kim talked to some people, they had no idea. And it's, these people come down, if you haven't been down to Waukegan Beach on a Sunday, you need to come. Come down there, I mean, people are bringing everything but the kitchen sink. I mean, it's, I mean, they got chairs, they got, I mean, it's, it's an ordeal. And these people bring everything down there, and then someone's got their jet ski, it's almost, they don't understand that if you're gonna do that, you have to be north, and the sign that designates that is down. But that sign is even, even confusing also. So, as a teacher and a communicator, the signage we have is, first of all, it's too far back, that may be the only place we can get in the ground, I don't know. It's not, it doesn't explain it very well, but there, here's the other problem, is, for the most part, most people not, were complying. They were down, way down on the north end, way down. Few, few people didn't know. Then you get some people who really don't know how to ride a jet ski very well, and they're way too close, way, way too close to people in the water swimming. So, what we, we need to work on the logistics of how to address this. And the county boat went down and came back, and that was it. That's what he did, he went down. Now, the Lake County Sheriff, he may not know the ordinance, he may not know our own ordinance, you know, who knows? So we need a, we need logistics, we need better communication, and as Alderman May and I have talked, and Alderman Cunningham has voiced also, we need a staff down there, it's not gonna happen this year, we know that. We need a staff down there. The problem with the staff is, is probably gonna be younger kids. You don't want younger kids going up to a grown man, telling him he can't beach his jet ski. That's, doesn't work out too well. So, we need to think out the logistics of this to make it safer for everyone down there. I mean, because it was, I've been going there not every Sunday like a lot of people, but I try to make it every other, it was packed. It was, there were thousands of people, not hundreds, thousands of people down there. It was packed. All right? So we need to get that, we just need the logistics. We've tried, the signage is not, what's the word I'm looking for? Exact enough, maybe? It's, it's just not there. It doesn't, it, it's confusing. People got, they don't understand, the arrows are like, you know, and to be hon, a lot of these people are not English speakers, or limited English speakers. There's a lot of Eastern Europeans down there that I don't think they are very, you know, their English is not all that good. So maybe a jet ski with an X to it, or a boat with an X to it, on the beach, something of that sort, I don't know. We just gotta get the logistics figured out so that we don't have an accident down there. And we have to communicate with the Lake County Sheriff, because from what Corporation Council has said, the water is their jurisdiction, correct? The beach is our jurisdiction? What happens on the beach is ours, what happens on the water is theirs. I don't know if we can get buoys in the water. I'm a former beach director, people think, oh, it's Lake Michigan. Those buoys will be up on the shore in a week. They'll, they'll wa, I'm assuming, they'll just wash up out, because the Lake Michigan is a lot rougher than people think. So that might not be the answer. I don't know if it is or not, but we have to get this figured out before we have an accident down there, because of the probably 2,000 people down there, you know, 98% of them know what they're doing. You always got the 2% that just, they don't know what they're doing. So we need to think about that. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos? Just one thing. I had the good privilege today, well, sorry, two things. Number one, SCOOP, I got a couple hours to spend on Saturday night, it was really wonderful, as the mayor reiterated. Lots of people, it was great to see so many people downtown Waukegan. I envision a Waukegan that looks like that almost every weekend, I think that'd be amazing. I think we can get there. Number two, I had the good privilege today of attending the high school's summer school graduation. So there's all the seniors, they had a new summer school, and then they graduated today. There was approximately 39 graduates for summer school, so we got 39 more graduates in Waukegan. And I had the opportunity to speak to and offer some words of advice to them, and I think it was a really good experience to have the students see an Alderman at their graduation and offer an opportunity to communicate with them and offer them to talk to me later after the graduation. One or two took advantage of it, but I think it's nice exposure for the youth that are coming up in this community to know about our Alderman and to feel comfortable addressing us and talking to us. So I think it's something beneficial for us to try to be at the graduations going forward and just make a presence there. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you. Alderman Newsome?
Happy birthday, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Taylor, to adjourn. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit www.waukeganil.gov. If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.